Good evening. Called to order this August 20th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and I ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you. Would you please join the city council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council with me in the place of allegiance? Place of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Vince Riga. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us, as well as your colleague there as well. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts. The general agenda and the consent agenda. It's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on the consent agenda unless the council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13. It will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, members, the public can always get copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, by going to the city's website and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull?
13 and 18, please.
Hearing none other, I move for a little balance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, and anyone opposed, vote no. When it comes up. Did everybody put the motion there?
We don't have it on the screen yet.
We don't have it.
Not coming up on the screen. Are we going to say we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye. And opposed, no. Old-fashioned way. Old-school. Councilmember Taylor? All right, we'll go then to item C-13.
Item C-13. Ordinants amending Section 42-122F of the city code relating to 25 miles per hour speed limits located in the northwest ward, Crafton Street and Duke Street, recommended by the Public Safety Committee.
Councilmember Bessie, want to this one?
I have no objections to this. I just wanted to note it as a matter of record that Duke Street and most of Crafton Street are in the southwest ward.
Okay.
And I'll flip my colleague from the northwest ward to see who gets to move approval here.
Somebody move approval then.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, Councilmember McIntosh.
So this is, I'm highly positive of this thing going at 25 miles an hour. This is going to be a major cut-through street when business 40 closes. I think we're going to need some other measures along this and West 4th Street, so I'm sure we'll be getting together with staff to talk about things we can do to keep speeds low.
Very good. Do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting aye. Anyone opposed, vote no. All in favor, say aye. Oh, it's up now, okay. Okay. Vote yes or no. Thank you. That passes you now. Thank you. Now, item C-18.
Item C-18. Resolution approving the Old Town Club Road Traffic Calming Plan for Funding and Construction Located in the Northwest Ward, Recommended by Public Works Committee.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes, thank you. This one slipped by in committee because the question that I had raised with regard to the other traffic calming agenda item on this evening should have also been raised in the context of this one. So for the purposes of equity, I did have a question I needed to ask Ms. McCullough, please.
Okay. Ms. McCullough here. To me, or Mr. Damian, you can ask.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. Councilmember Bessie, can I help you?
Yes, sir. In the survey of neighbors on how they responded to the proposed traffic calming plan in this incident, did you just survey the residents of Old Town Club Road proper, or did you also survey the residents of Tarden Court, Kempheart Circle, and Gateshead Drive?
The answer to your question, sir, is that we survey the residents on the affected street, not in the surrounding area.
All right. Thank you. That's the information. I needed to have a comment.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
There's a second.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Bessie.
This is an instance of a pervasive policy problem that I think we're still dealing with in the case of traffic calming plans. Not all the affected citizens are actually being surveyed. And what happens is you survey the blocks which would directly have the structures, but not the, in a number of cases, many streets and houses that would be directly affected by the changes. This produces a bias towards what I think is the least desirable traffic calming plan, and that is speed humps. And I think that we are seeing a proliferation of a type of traffic calming that is going to create increasingly severe problems the more we permit it to be placed on public streets in the city. And on that basis, I'll have to vote no on this and the other project.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
I know this street well. As Mr. Bessie said, it is a road that goes from Coliseum Drive into Old Town Club, but off of it are two or three other streets, and the only way those people get in or out 100% of the time is on the main road. It's a dead end. And it's incomprehensible to me that we would not have asked those people, since they're only 100% of the time, as much as the other folks are. So ideally, I think we ought to repoll the neighbors, but if we insist on voting, I absolutely cannot support something when I would say at least 40% of the people that live in there, if not maybe more, were not asked.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the motion passes five to three. Thank you very much. Well, now, I'll go back to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. We have three economic development items, an item related to a traffic calming plan, an item related to the youth build grant, an item related to the process of filling a vacancy on the city council, an item related to November's meeting schedule, as well as the public comment period. The three economic development items are listed for public hearings, and when these hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak, and if no one wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing and consider the item. May I have item number one, please?
Item G1. Consideration of Items Related to Economic Development Assistance to Whittaker Park Development Authority Located in the North Ward, Recommended by the Finance Committee.
Might I just ask Mr. Rowley to give just a brief comment about the purpose of this particular action for folks at home?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tem Burke, and members of council. As many of you all will remember, in March of 2016, the mayor and city council approved entering into a public-private partnership with the Whittaker Park Development Authority to address critical infrastructure needs and spur economic development in and around the Whittaker Park area. This request is for $1.25 million to fund the extension of Akron Drive through Whittaker Park and connect with Shore Fair Drive. This is the next phase of the critical infrastructure needs on the project.
Any questions for Mr. Rowley? Councilmember Montgomery.
Just for specifics, what is the, what is a proposal in and around future investment in the site?
It is, councilmember, my understanding is that this connection will open up several parcels on the Whittaker Park footprint for future development. There's the potential for retail development, mixed-use development. I don't know that any of that has specifically been envisioned at this point, but those are some of the potential uses of the parcels that it is believed that this road extension will open up.
But they wouldn't be able to access without the road.
That's correct. This is, this is, this access road is the critical piece to be able to further develop several of the parcels that are in that quadrant of the Whittaker Park area.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll have a public hearing. First person signed up is Don Gerhart. If you would, please give your name, address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Don Gerhart. I'm the chief technical officer for Organic Transit, and we manufacture a small, personal electric vehicle. We would like to move our headquarters and our manufacturing operations to Whittaker Park. We would eventually employ over 500 people, and this proposed improvements to the road structure would help us get parts and components into Whittaker Park, and it would also help us ship out our vehicle from Whittaker Park. So Organic Transit, and I'm Don Gerhart, we're in support of this proposal.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Allen, P.O. Box 284-27102. First of all, I would like to say that the Whittaker Park Development Authority, I have an issue all the way around with that. Sure enough, it was developed in 2011 by the mayor, Allen Joins, Bob Leek, and others. Ms. Dee Dee Adams sit on that board, and here we are again. The Whittaker Park Development Authority have already received over $10 million since 2011, and here we are giving this private, nonprofit organization, which several members of the city council sits on, $1.25 million again. And sure enough, if the individuals, the property, the Whittaker Park property was given to the Whittaker Park Development Authority. So I have a problem with that, and once again, the people who are voting for this, including Ms. Adams, you know, should recuse themselves as well from this vote, but let the public understand that this is not just another nonprofit organization. This is a private organization that has been in existence and have received, so far to date, just from the city alone, over $10 million, which also pays a salary to an executive director. So my answer is no. Let the people understand that we're tired of it. Trust me, we are. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Vice Mayor Burke, the rest of the council. My name is Bob Leek, 1080 West 4th Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. Here speaking, favor of this bond dollars for Whittaker Park. To clarify a couple of things that have been asked, questions of the council. First, what this project would do is to connect Shore Fair Drive, which dead ends in the Reynolds Boulevard right now, tie it into Akron Drive, which would give traffic a straight shot back to US 52 on Akron Drive. It'll open up about 22 developable acres and also provide direct access to four buildings that make up approximately 600,000 square feet. Right now, the only access you have is through winding your way through parking lots that are disjointed, and there's no, there's no direct connectivity. This money will go in support of additional dollars that have been raised by the authority, some additional public dollars that have gone into this, and we also have a request into NCDOT to support this project as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Good question.
Clark.
Ms. Adams serves on your board. What compensation does she receive?
Zero. No one on the board receives a dime in compensation, nor does the executive director.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Mr. Leek?
Yes.
Have you ever received a check from the city of Winston-Salem for incentive funds directly to you?
To me? No, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Larson.
This is an obviously important connector into the heart of developable land. Who owns the road when we're done with it?
It'll be owned by the city of Winston-Salem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. -- oh, excuse me.
The connection to Akron Drive is really important, because that's been one of the problems. When people come into the city, they have a problem connecting, and so going to Akron to 52 will be a plus. Also, how many jobs would be created in that area?
Hard to say exactly, but we anticipate with Cook coming hopefully on the west side, as well as the residential potential, and the buildings and sites that are there, there could be well over 1,000 people in the eastern part of that campus as it fully develops.
I guess I'll say what I said before. When we're in a competitive world, and when businesses are going from one place to another place, if we want to be a part of what's going on, we have to spend tax dollars, and these tax dollars will generate revenue, not only just for the jobs, but for the other businesses in this community. So I can see this as a plus, not a negative.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Mr. Leek, could you explain briefly to the audience how important the Whittaker Park site is to the developing the next phase or area of Winston-Salem, based on the history of it being, it was the epicenter of manufacturing for many, many decades on the north end of town? But what will it do for us now, since it went dark in? And tell them when it went dark, when it went black, and nothing's been there.
Well, it went dark in stages, but it's been completely empty for well over five years, and of course, Reynolds talked with the authority about gifting the property starting about three and a half years ago. The property was actually deeded over in April of last year, 2017, and we've been working on developing a master plan and utility infrastructure to help support what we hope is the future development. That project, in its heyday, you know, had thousands of people working there. There was lots of traffic in and out. A lot of school groups took tours of the facility. In fact, I believe you gave some of those tours, Councilmember Adams. But the project has gone dark. There's very little activity going on, particularly in the pieces that Reynolds divested. They continue to operate a section in the center. We believe that when it's fully developed, again, there could be several thousand new jobs created in and around that project, including not only industrial, light industrial distribution, but also the potential for residential, some other mixed-use development that could include some retail, might even one day have an office component and a hotel that's part of that east campus that we're talking about today. So this is the first step in many that will hopefully get us well down the road with that park, but there are a lot of, a lot of exciting projects looking at it at the moment, and we believe this is a great signal to them that we're going to continue to redevelop that property and put it back on the market. Thank you.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. Leek, so Reynolds American gifted the property to the nonprofit Whittaker Park.
Yes, sir.
So it wasn't the city?
No.
Right. That's what I thought.
Thank you. Mr. Larson, have a question.
Is it, is it possible for us to get the map up that we see in front of our screen here to actually show the public where this road is and what the development parcels are? Is that something staff can really, if, put their hands on? I think we talk about these things in a way that most people don't, can't tangibly look at what we're talking about here, and I think it's an important enough development component of the city to, is that up? I think that's upside down, maybe. Yeah.
Perfect.
To show what it means an opening up a major parcel of land, and also what it means for traffic patterns in the area, so.
Mr. Leek, could you kind of point out?
I will. So Roman Boulevard runs here, this is Indiana Avenue. 52 would be off the screen, over to the right, the airport, et cetera. What we're talking about is constructing this leg of road, tying it in eventually to Akron Drive, which is located right here, as well as building this cul-de-sac extension, which would then give access to, to these developable sites, as well as these facilities that you see outlined in red on the map. So it opens up the campus completely.
Thank you. Other questions, Ms. Leek? Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Leek. I will close the public hearing and would recognize, uh, Councilmember, oh, I beg your pardon, Mr. Carter. Sorry.
The lady outside took the sheet away so swiftly, I didn't get a chance to put my name on it. What I would say is this.
Mr. Carter, we know who you are. Would you state your name?
Phil Carter, 1148 East 5th Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you.
What I would say is this, that if we use taxpayers' money and bring Walt Disneyland here, I want a baby to play in it. So what I would like to hear some of these businesses say is that they would commit to trying to hire by the demographics of this city, and if not achieving that, a willingness to provide some of the funds, the revenue in which they generate, to programs to help uplift those that are unfortunate. We shouldn't take taxpayers' dollars and someone just say, "Well, we're going to hire 1,000 people." That sounds good. But I'd like to hear somebody say, "I'm going seriously attempt to hire based on the demographics of this city, because it is everyone in this city whose money that is." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Sorry, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
While he's going down, I'd just say that Mr. Carter brings up a very, very positive point, and we have been talking about trying to generate revenue, but also get jobs for people who are living in this city, who's paying taxes. And we've emphasized to the mayor on more than one occasion, when he's lobbying for companies to come here, that's one of the most important things, and we need to see the results of some of those efforts.
Yes, ma'am.
Carolyn Williams, 1001 Glen Karen Road, Winston-Salem, 27107. I'm a candidate for mayor of Winston-Salem in 2020 because a white cop, Dalton Edward McGuire, killed a black man, Edward Van McCray, after forcefully removing him from the backseat of a car during a traffic stop on Good Friday of Easter weekend this year for moving suspiciously. At this writing, five months later, Forsyth County District Attorney Jim O'Neill still refuses to release the body cam, the body worn camera footage, which we pay for, of the fatal encounter, and has yet to file criminal charges against the white police officer. The Winston-Salem Journal petitioned the court for release of the footage and was denied until the family could have a chance to review it, which they instead referred to a wrongful death attorney. Will taxpayer dollars which purchased police body cameras to provide public transparency now be used to conceal the very evidence of police abuse? I stand together with black citizens of Winston-Salem who demand a reckoning for Mr. McCray's murder. In addition, we are troubled that two front-seat passengers in the car with Mr. McCray were never identified and have given no public statements regarding the killing. I wonder what Daryl Hunt would say if he were alive. Please vote no on the city of Winston-Salem's proposed $122 million bond package on the November ballot to demand transparency and accountability for the lethal actions of Officer Dalton Edward McGuire on the night of Friday, March 30th, 2018. And I want to just ask you, how sleep do you think we are that you would try to steal the East Ward seat? Have you never heard of no taxation without representation? You, Mayor Joins, and the whole city council, police chief and district attorney of Winston-Salem Forsyth County are a disgrace. I'm Carly Pete. I'm running for mayor in 2020. Find me on Facebook. We are Winston-Salem.
Thank you.
Her grassroots.
The comments were not related to this particular item that we're dealing with. Anyone else want to be heard on this particular item that we're dealing with? Thank you. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and I would recognize the vice-chairman of the Finance Committee, Councilmember Adams, since the Councilmember Clark was out of town now.
Yes, I asked her to do that.
Mayors and the members of the city council, I move for approval of item G1, consideration of economic development assistance to the Whittaker Park Development Authority.
Second.
The motion second. Any discussion? Councilmember Clark and then Councilmember Montgomery.
Reynolds did this town a tremendous benefit when it gifted Whittaker Park to us. Over 100 acres of land and over a million square feet of building under roof. It's up to the community now to make it a reality. Because it was owned by a single entity, that being RJ Reynolds, some money's having to be spent to separate the utilities. For example, they didn't have individual electrical meters that you need, water sewer needs to be separated, et cetera, and roads need to be added. The benefit here, and I think we're going to do it right, because we're certainly starting off on the right foot, is that we could have a perpetual economic development fund, because the profits that this makes is a nonprofit company, and as was said earlier, all the folks that served do not get compensation, and that money can be plied, plowed back in for additional economic development. And that's something we've been missing since the beginning, and that is an ongoing, reoccurring source to continue to develop. And shortly, we're going to hear about some other projects that are going to take place there, but the mayor said, Bob said thousands. I think it could be many thousands of jobs in there, and hundreds, if not hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars worth of investment there, particularly on the side of town, and Ms. Adams referred to the buildings going dark. There were a number of businesses that went out of business, the most famous one probably being Bell Brothers and Simos, two of the iconic restaurants on the north side of town. Both closed when Whittaker Park closed, because it sucked all the jobs and all the folks on that side of town that ate lunch every day. So I think this is a great benefit, but also a challenge to the community, and as I said, this is money for a public road, and it's the start of what I hope is going to be a home run, just like the Research Park has been a home run, Union Cross Development Park's been a home run, and what's the last one down there?
Temple School Road.
Temple School Road. We've had a lot of, of home runs, and this is, I hope, will be, continue to be one. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Actually, Councilmember Clark touched on a couple of the points that I was going to ask Mr. Rowley and then the city attorney if they would chime in, and I want to make sure that folks understand the context conversation, because we have several economic development projects on the agenda for tonight, and I can imagine that some of the comments that were heard will be heard throughout. And one of the things that I hear in that is not so much a challenge against investment and economic development, but a feel that the benefits don't benefit everybody throughout the entire community. And I think that's something that we have to take consciously as a city and as a council, but I do want folks to understand that part of the responsibility of this council is to begin to create the environment for the opportunities to grow. And at Whittaker Park, the actions and the items that are being done are all about massaging the environment in that area so that jobs can grow, and then it becomes a responsibility of this council and the businesses that are attracted there to ensure that that creates equitable opportunities across the entire community. Part of that is in our economic development policy that we have written into that, specifically that businesses who receive economic incentives have the responsibility of engaging individuals that live in our NRSA, NRSA areas, which encompasses many of the communities and the neighborhoods that have economic challenges and people who have barriers to employment. So that is something that's written into our economic development policies. So I want the public to know that that's something that's in there, that companies are given as a part of the requirements when we do our economic development deals. And so that was one piece, Mr. Mayor, if it's in order. I did want the city attorney at least to speak to how we structure those deals and that the benefit goes to the economic incentive, if that, if folks were willing to hear that.
Ms. Carmen.
Sure. Mayor and councilmembers, as Councilmember Montgomery indicated, we, in every DDA, P3 Public Private Partnership Agreement and Economic Development Agreement, we always try to make sure that when city dollars are involved, that we include provisions regarding the hire of local residents, as well as the hire of MWB's minority women contractors, and that we make sure that we receive value for the dollars that the city puts into the project. And so that's included in every agreement, and you may remember that this is actually an amendment to the original agreement. So this has been voted on once before, and before it was voted on the last time, if I may, I did look at the conflict of interest statute and voting statutes to make sure it was okay for Councilmember Adams to vote and determine that it was okay for her to vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie and then Councilmember Burke.
Yes, thanks.
This council's been involved in a lot of economic development work over the past several years. We have to do it because we have to ensure that we have the tax base to support city services for all our residents, and that we have the jobs where our people can work. We know that when businesses are looking at locating or expanding in the community, they don't ask first about incentives. they don't ask first about incentives. That's a bell and whistle. That's a tiebreaker at best. They ask questions about whether our education system is sufficient, whether it is going to provide the worker training that they need to have good employees, and whether it is going to provide the good schools where their employees want to live and send their children to class. And they ask about physical infrastructure. The land has to be available in the right place, and the infrastructure has to be available to make the project make economic sense. And that's where this particular action that we're taking tonight comes in. The public infrastructure, the streets to access the facility space and the developable space, that is a public responsibility. That is the kind of thing that all our tax money naturally goes to at the local level, and it has to, or we will not have a functioning economy and we will not have jobs. This is the type of smart, targeted infrastructure development that will ensure that we have a good economic future for all the folks in Winston-Salem.
Councilwoman Burke.
Yes, that sounds very good. The comments that Councilmember Montgomery made and the comments that Mr. Clark made and the comments that Mr. Best had made. And until we make sure our citizens are educated to get the jobs, they will never get the jobs. Y'all can sit here and listen to us talk, and we can say what we want and how we have so much, what the attorney just finished saying is in the plan, and we will make sure that these developers will follow this. Well, if we're not educated to get the jobs and we're not doing what we ought to do to get the folks ready for the jobs, we'll be on the same page 10 years from now. So now, if I were a leader in the community and I was one of the community activists, I would get real busy and start talking to groups about getting the citizens ready for the jobs when they come. Because we could talk all day and all night. When these companies come in here, if we don't have the people to do the jobs, they're going to get the folks who can do the jobs. That's just the realistic something. And some years ago, I said to Mr. Bill Stewart, I said, "You know, when these companies come, we need to have the infrastructure ready." And it went in one ear and out the other. But then, when the Utilities Commission made that recommendation, and I called City Hall, Mr. Stewart said, "Uh-oh, Ms. Burke's going to tell me she'd already told me that." And so we do spend money so that developers won't have to struggle. We also initiated, so when a developer comes to do business with this city, we like for there to be a one stop. When they get into the places they need to go, we don't want our staff to hold them up. We want to be ready so they can move from place to place and get whatever permits and things that they need. But I would emphasize to all of the leaders, people who come down and criticize us, we are hardworking people. And when you were talking about the Whittaker Park, I wish you had put the picture up of Union Cross to see how bad that was. And the people who, the Dale people say, "Who is this?" They were in Charlotte talking to a group of people. "Who is this Miss Vivian Burke in Winston-Salem telling us what we're going to do?" I said to the mayor, "We're going to do it. We're going to let them know it's good that they're coming here, but there will be a responsibility along with it." And they did work. But if you're not ready, you can talk all night and all day, you're not going anywhere without them.
Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor.
Well, I wanted to speak to Ms. Williams' comment at the appropriate time, and I will say that incentives is a process that nobody really wants to participate in. But in order to be competitive for jobs and economic development, we have to do it or we lose these opportunities to other cities. And committee, those of you who are here, I sat quiet and then sort of asked the question. You know, I'm curious to know what is wrong with some of the incentives that were presented tonight? I've actually called some of the members of the Southeast Ward and some of those who we know in the community. I haven't heard anybody that doesn't support these deals. Until I've heard those, it's important that we continue to create jobs and provide economic development for the community. So I'll say that, and then, Mayor, if I can just sort of pivot. Madam City Attorney, before the end of the meeting, Ms. Williams addressed a few things. I wanted to see if you can give us an update on the McCray case as it relates to the State Bureau of Investigation, and just a little bit of information on the state law that sort of prohibits the City Council from controlling the footage and letting the people know how the process works. They just literally usurped our ability to control the footage that now goes for a particular process. But if you give us some information about that at the appropriate time, that is not now, but I want to make sure she's heard because I do represent her in the Southeast Ward.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
I want to speak to a little bit about something Mayor Protim said. People look at our community, when people decide where to move their businesses and bring their jobs, they look at several different things. They look at education level, they look at quality of life. But commercial real estate has gotten very sophisticated, and as Mr. Leake can tell you, if you don't have anything in your wagon to sell, they're not coming here. And by being in the wagon, people get on the internet and they look and they come down to, "I need a three acre site that's got two dock doors and a roll-up." And that information, they can, and within 30 seconds, you can pull it up for three states around here. So we're in intense competition, making ourselves ready for the jobs that are available and going after them aggressively is what we need to do. And I'm unashamed about having that attitude. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have a motion? Second, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously. We thank you. Item G2.
Item G2, public hearing on resolution approving economic development assistance to Cook Medical pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1 located in the North Ward, recommended by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Evans, Rowley, would you please give us a brief update there?
Certainly, Mayor Johns. Mayor, this item authorizes the city to provide up to $2.46 million in economic development assistance to Cook Medical. That amount represents approximately 75% of the net new property taxes that this project is anticipated to generate over its first 10 years. That assistance will be used to reduce the company's outlay at its prospective new location in Whittaker Park. The company is currently operating in approximately 200,000 square feet of retail, excuse me, of space that's spread across several different buildings on the north side of town. So again, this assistance would assist in their expansion into their proposed new location in Whittaker Park. And as is the case with all of our economic development projects, this project more than pays for itself. The company will not receive any incentive money until they perform. Once the company pays its property taxes, the city, at a point several months later on, will return to the company on an amount equal to approximately 75% of the taxes that had been generated by the project.
Any questions? Mr. Rowley? All right, thank you. This is, again, a public hearing. First person signed up is Mr. Dan Gerhardt. Gerhardt.
I'm the chief technical officer of Organic Transit, and I recommend that we proceed with this for two reasons. The first reason is there's a possibility that Organic Transit may want to sublease pigs from Cook Medical if we're not able to find a proper property direct from the Whittaker Park. So we have that personal interest. The second one, with our particular vehicle, it has a lot of medical potential applications. Many of our customers cannot get a driver's license. We have a low-speed vehicle, and our customers have epilepsy, they have medical problems, and we're very much interested in interfacing the vehicle with medical solutions. For example, presensing an epileptic fit and having the vehicle pulled off the road. There are things with autonomous vehicles, with this vehicle, eventually can be an autonomous vehicle. It goes to a person at his house, it picks them up, and it takes them to the doctor's office, or it takes them grocery shopping. And we're in the advance of this technology. We started this company five years ago. We're the worldwide leader in this personal vehicle. It has solar power, you pedal it. And one of our customers did a video recently, posted it on the internet, it got a million hits in 24 hours. And we decided that we need to dramatically increase production for someone with a lot more money can come in, copy what we're doing, and, you know, leave Organic Transit by the wayside. Your facility is ideal for us. We're manufacturing these vehicles in cells now. It's not as efficient as having a production line. Whittaker Park has a wide open space, and we want to make the most efficient facility in the world for manufacturing this type of personal low-speed vehicle. Also, what we want to do is ship components worldwide. We've had requests from Europe, from South America to build these vehicles, and our plan is to have the kits assembled at Whittaker Park, and we would ship them out on shipping containers around the world, and we would have the very efficient assembly line in Whittaker Park for the market in the USA. So because of these medical applications, we're very much interested in being associated with.
Mr. Gerhardt, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Allen.
Julie Allen, P.O., Box 284, 27102. First of all, let's make, let's make sure that we don't get away from what this is all about. We're okay with investments. That's not the issue. It's the way you handle the investments that matter. And for whatever reason, you all have been doing this for so long that you all have convinced yourself that we gotta do these incentives, we gotta have these incentives. So we're going to insensitize or desensitize everything else just because, well, it's very competitive. So let's just take Cook Medical. It's been here in Winston-Salem for many, many years, okay? So they're going to move into the Whittaker Park Development Authority. So the question that should be answered is this: Then if you own the Whittaker Park Development Authority that was given to Whittaker Park Development Authority by RJ Reynolds, Scott Pree, okay? Then tell us, how is it, other than the property tax, that's coming back into the city, on what's really going to happen, seeing that you're doing a reimbursement at the end of the year as far as incentives? So if they pay $200,000 and then we turn around and give them back $75,000, that takes away from the city. So don't tell us about incentives. We understand what incentives are, but maybe the problem is, is that you all don't know how to negotiate with people who are already here. If people want to leave, you talk about all these jobs, but where are they? Back in 2005, Wake Forest University indicated we should have about 10,000 to 15,000 jobs here in Winston-Salem because of all the money, and we won't even go into all the money that was given to Wake Forest University, okay? So that tells us that maybe you all don't know. But let me make a very important point. Mr. Bob Leake did receive payment in 2015 with the Whittaker Park Development Authority. And unless you're calling their 990 financial form a liar or incorrect, he received over $81,000 in some type of salary from Whittaker Park Development Authority. He may not receive it now, nobody may be paid now. But listen, let's come correct, let's be transparent. See, if you don't know, you need to ask somebody because you all know, certain ones of you do know. And I'm here to tell you, the Whittaker Park Development Authority is not about investments. That's not a corporation that came from out of town. And Ms. Burke, you keep saying, "Well, you know, this is great." Maybe you all need to do a little bit more homework on what you all say and do. Thank you.
Mark Owens.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, members of council, Mark Owens, 411 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem 27101. President CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and we are here to support these projects as Assistant City Manager Rowley mentioned. These are great economic investments that are paid and reimbursed back, so both parties win. And Mayor Protim, you mentioned something the other night at the Finance Committee, that this is a vibrant area, and we want to bring vibrancy back into the, to the Whittaker Park area. This project and the others on the agenda tonight are projects that have been here, shown support and commitment to Winston-Salem over the years, that have hired and brought in people from all over our area to be a part of their companies, have given back as great corporate citizens. And as a Chamber of Commerce, we support those and we support these packages that help hire new jobs, put people to work, and hopefully change lives and invest in education in other ways that we can involve our community together. So on behalf of our business community, we support these projects, and we appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Leake.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Bob Leake, 1080 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem 27101. In 1984, Cook Medical opened their first facility in Winston-Salem. And since that time, they have grown continuously to where they have over 650 employees on a campus of over five buildings on the north side of town. Because of that growth, they have outgrown the facilities that they are in now. And so about a year ago, they began a very exhaustive search of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, trying to find a location in which to, they could expand their operations, trying very hard to stay in Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Unfortunately, everything that they looked at ultimately did not work, including a site that they looked at on the north part of the county, a site in Innovation Quarter, and several other pieces of property throughout the county. They found a site in a neighboring county that was absolutely perfect, 75 acres that were flat and were available to them should they want to move into that location. It was a greenfield site where they could build exactly what they wanted in the exact shape and size that they needed, and at a cost a lot less than redoing an old manufacturing building that was built in the 1960s. They were all set to announce their location for this greenfield site when we were given one more opportunity to show them the Whittaker Park Manufacturing Facility. They took a look at the building and agreed that they would be willing to consider the building, but because of its costs and some of the kind of drawbacks in the redevelopment, it's going to take significantly more money for them to do what they're going to do. They're currently in due diligence on the building, meaning they're looking at the building, trying to study the engineering to see if it will meet their needs. Your support of this project is important for several reasons. One, it will keep one of our city's finest corporate citizens here in Winston-Salem. They are now one of the largest manufacturing companies in our community. It will keep the 650 jobs that are currently located here and give them a platform in which to grow, we hope, future jobs in addition to that. It will provide an additional $55 million of new tax base that will come into the city that would not be here if they go into a neighboring county. And finally, it will set the tone for future development around Whittaker Park. When you have an opportunity like this, medical device company that is so well-known globally that becomes your anchor tenant, that sends a signal to other companies that this is indeed a great place to do business. So I appreciate your support of this important project. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mr. Leake. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this proposed economic development project? Just economic development project. Mr. Carter.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What I'm going to have to do at this point is do rely on the open door policy since we've spoken of education, which is the crater of a vibrant civilization. Many people back here, they do go to the school board meetings, they work in their communities, they help tutor children, all in the attempt to facilitate education. So I was wondering if possibly this body could join with us and ask the school board to get rid of these low-performing schools that constantly remain at the same level. Maybe if they heard from you all how important it is that we educate all of our citizens, especially those that are of a minority, then they could get them jobs. Because you're correct, Madam Mayor Protim, if you can't get the education, you can't get no jobs. But if the school system is failing the children and low performing is being held at the same status, it'll never happen. So I would hope that you all... So I would hope that you all would consider putting an article in the paper, coming down to the school board meeting and saying, "Superintendent Emery, we need to stop this. We'd appreciate your help, because we certainly going down." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. So Williams, do you want to comment on this particular item? I allowed your comments on the other, which would be basically out of order, but if you would stick to this particular issue.
Everything, thank you. Carolyn Williams, 1001 Glen Karen Road, Winston-Salem, 27107. Everything I said on Agenda Item G1 applies throughout. What I am saying is that without transparency and accountability for what happened to Mr. McCray, even though I voted for you five times, Mayor Joints, without transparency and accountability for what happened to Mr. McCray, I can't trust that you are actually valuing black lives enough to suit me if someone can be pulled from the backseat of a car. About investing, though, I was here last year on August 21st. Actually, it was the day of the solar eclipse, and I remember coming in here and asking you to consider a project near my park for the neighborhood kids and activity center, and asked for you to just do some enhancements at the park for the kids in my neighborhood. It's been a year, and nothing's happened, except on March 1st of this year, someone drove into the front of my house, and I don't think they were ever criminally prosecuted for it. Then they uprooted a little library that my home business installed in the peace garden at the park. I came down here last year asking for sewer connections for me and 14 of my neighbors within the city limits. None of us have sewer connections yet. So you do what you want to do. You do millions of dollars' worth of work outside of black neighborhoods, or at least the neighborhood I'm in, in Easton, is black, white, Hispanic. It's a beautiful place, but I think all of the improvements, all of the listening for my neighborhood has been outsourced to the Neighborhood Association, which I'm no longer a member of for very specific reasons. Until we can get transparency and accountability for our lives, how can we entrust our city and its future to be equitable to all of us by you all? I mean, you don't seem to be bothered by the North Carolina law that says that we don't have access to property we own. Did we invest in body cameras? What was the purpose? Was it for transparency in situations when there could be a racist police officer? I love police officers. I'm not talking about all of them. I'm talking about that one, that night, whose account of the encounter is the only one we have on record. That should not be lawful. That should not be lawful, and I will fight that every day I live, because that could be my grandchildren, that could be my brothers, that could be my neighbors who are in the backseat of that car. So I'm just going to leave for the rest of the evening, so you can have peace and have your meeting, and I will just watch the rest from home. But just know, I'm coming for Winston-Salem. I'm running for mayor of Winston-Salem, and I don't have to be a Democrat or a Republican to do that. And I thank you for your time. If you would update McCray and Easton Park murders on, in the newspaper, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Suggs?
I do have a response, but I'll talk to you on the phone. Or you can stay in here.
Ms. Suggs?
Good evening. U.S.S. Zell, Executive Director, Action for Now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It really disturbs me to the degree, because you all have seen me here on numerous occasions. And again, when we're talking about accountability and transparency, you all easily use the term, but it's not readily applied. I've heard you use that term as well, Mr. Montgomery, when it came to the Ardmore situation, how you said you're honored to try to save historic communities. Have you forgot East Winston? That's a historic community as well. So see, you all throw this term out there, but there are those who do understand public affairs. And as trustees of the residents in this city, when you have breached your fiduciary duty to the people by not letting them know, by not keeping them informed, by not vetting these projects that these investors are going in to make sure that the programs are in place before the money is given. That's how you make sure that they get the treatment and the education that they need to get the jobs. You can't give the money away first and say, "Let's stay in the 'I have a dream' speech," but yet the people are still poor. The vetting's supposed to take place ahead of time. And you can use the media how you want to help get stuff that was tweaked and bonds, but when it comes to the important information, it's funny how The Chronicle, The Chronicle is not putting this information out, The Journal is not putting this information out, Channel 13 is not putting this information out, and we're talking about transparency? Really? Are we being transparent to the people? Have any one of you said, "Because so many people was not here, I want to wait till more people come here"? Some of you have made votes by saying, "I'm only going by the people that's here." You represent not only the wards, but the city. So if you feel uncomfortable about it because certain people are not here, you should step up and say, "Let's hold on," not pass it along because so many people are not here. What is your position? What did you take your oath to? It's for the people, by the people, vested in the people. And when we speak up as such, a lot of you try to disseminate yourselves and divide yourselves by saying, "Well, I'm just the city councilman for this ward." You just passed over $15 million collectively in the finance meeting the other day, and nobody said it's because I'm with this particular ward. You was looking for the city. Why can't some of this money be put over there and make sure that some of these companies give the money back to the city that have not met the job of recommendation that they supposedly have hired?
Thank you, Ms. Suggs. There's a, I saw a hand back in the back. Would you like to be heard, sir? On this item?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ken Rashid. I live at 1338 Argonne Boulevard. I had no plans on talking about anything tonight, but someone mentioned to me that it's my responsibility to come and share some of the things that are important to me and to our community. As I listen, I'm learning a lot by just being present, and I understand financial incentives and all of this stuff that you all are responsible for taking care of. But if you look in this audience, the people that are most affected by some of the things that are being done in the city are not here. My point is, is that I think you all have the responsibility to go into these communities and explain to people exactly what's going on, for these tax dollars are being spent. If you go into East Winston, I think people are, I know they feel disenfranchised by what's happening in the city, because we see everything that's happening downtown, but we don't see anything that's happening in the city. I think if you are representative of the people, then it is your responsibility to go into the community. You should be, I think you should be spending more time in the community that you actually spend down here, because the people need to hear from you. Some of them don't understand exactly what's going on, so you need to be there and explain these things. Some of us do, the majority of us do understand, because that's why we're here. The problem is, you're not hearing everyone's voices. So it's my recommendation that there is more time spent in the communities to try to explain, especially in the African-American community, to try to explain where these tax dollars are going, where jobs are available, what training needs to be done. Now, I think there'll be, some of them will be being put in a bad situation. You're bringing companies in, and now we're talking about getting education. So why aren't all of these things being done beforehand? You should be in the community talking about education and what needs to be done. Some of the programs is being done, all the training is being done, if the city is in fact offering training programs. But I really think you all need to spend more time in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to be heard on this item? Signal one, I declare the public hearing closed, and I would again recognize Councilmember Adams, Vice Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Council, I move that we accept Item G2, Public Economic Development Assistance to the Cook Medical Company.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Adams?
For the record, yeah, I was born and raised in the North Ward, and not just as a council member of the North Ward, but a council member for the city of Winston-Salem. It's always been my passion to try to improve the quality of life. I do it 24/7. Now, as you've heard some of them say, and I've said even when the recession hit about 10 years ago, where we were scrambling like companies of cities all over America, begging companies to come and just give our folks jobs. I've sat in meetings where as people said, "Well, we only have 10 jobs," and I've sat in meetings where people said we had 100 jobs. But at the end of the day, a job is a job is a job. Yes, we know that there are gaps in workforce development and education. We've been fervently talking with this county and others to try to bring them to the table as to what needs to happen for everybody to be prepared. Councilmember Taylor, every time someone moves into your ward, a company or whatever, the city along with the council member has job fairs way ahead of time to explain the requirements of what's needed for those jobs. Likewise, with these companies and things we're doing tonight, there are things that go into this that, yeah, maybe you don't know about it. But again, I tell people too, and I'm not dismissing anybody's engagement, but people can tell me every character on the haves and the have-nots, tell me every character in Show of Queen Sugar, every NFL and other stuff, sports stats. But when it comes to the things that matter the most, our quality of life, voting, understanding that when you don't vote in these off-year elections, we end up where we are now. Our children are marginalized, our communities are marginalized, and then the rest of us are left to try to do the best we can do with what we got to work with. I'm not ashamed of what I do up here. I study the data. My peers would tell you that, and people didn't know me about it. I'm not up here just haphazardly making decisions. I need jobs at Whittaker Park. I need another part of town to come up, like Union Park and downtown. And just like back in the day, it needs to be spread all over the city like we had tobacco and textile and furniture and other stuff. I am supporting this Agenda Item like I did for the first Agenda Item, because it's about creating the jobs. Mr. Rowley knows one of the things that this council asks for when we put our tax dollars in it. There are clawbacks, and there are requirements, imparted at its intentional inclusion of diversity. We did it with Herbalife. We did it with Dale. We did it with Caterpillar. Cook and all the others that are here tonight, they understand what this is about. And Mr. Rowley, if we need to post this on 13 and The Chronicle and The Journal again and run it, where's when we do this, what we're asking people for? Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, we need to start doing that. But I'm just here to tell you, we are in a, I know y'all don't want to hear this, but we in a precarious situation right now. We are fighting Wilmington, Florence, South Carolina, for jobs to come here to Winston-Salem. Now, if all of you just don't want us to go do this, and if anybody else got another ideas how we can do this, bring it on. We open to that. But right now, when we sitting in these chambers and whatever, trying to figure this out, I tell you, we don't do this without consciousness of what we're doing. Cook Medical right now employs, Mr. Rowley, what's the numbers for Cook Medical on their stats? Some of the stats on their employee numbers, diversity.
Councilmember Adams, Cook Medical employs approximately 650 employees, and they have an incredibly diverse workforce from the information that was submitted to us. Approximately 31% are Winston-Salem residents, 22% of their workforce is African-American, and more than 70% is female.
Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie, then Councilmember Montgomery.
My comments are mainly for the folks who may be watching on television, may be confused about what exactly we're voting on. To circle back to the issue at hand, because some other important but unrelated issues have been raised in the comment period. What we're voting on here is a package that would help make it possible for Cook Medical to relocate and expand their facilities to a site in Winston-Salem, where our folks have a better chance at getting the expanded jobs and where the expanded investment will go into Winston-Salem's tax base and help pay for our services rather than go to another county. The particular proposal is important in this case because it helps to level the playing field of the costs of redeveloping an old existing facility rather than going to build from scratch on a greenfield property outside of the city and outside of the county. Because of that difference in costs, here, the availability of a carefully crafted incentives package is the tiebreaker. It is what makes it possible for the development to happen here rather than outside our city and county. And that's important, because this particular facility makes an ideal, as they say, anchor tenant for the redeveloped Whittaker Park facility overall. It will help attract other tenants from outside the city and county to come here to our area and provide investment and jobs here. So it has a double value, both this particular development and the influence it will exert on the reputation of the facility to other potential future tenants, and that's why it's worth supporting and why I will be voting for it.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Just a couple of comments similar to colleagues on council. One of the things about this that I think the entire city needs to understand is that when we look at the investment that Cook Medical is looking to make, we look at about a $55 million increase in terms of what we look at from a tax base standpoint. That is in addition to the existing location in which Cook Medical exists today. So in addition to their current location, they're going to invest in another location, creating net new tax base for the city. So anything that is returned through this incentive does not take away from services that are already being rendered. That is, they build the new facility, any tax revenue, the new tax revenue generated from the new facility that is at Whittaker Park, where they do, when they make their $55 million investment, that the new tax dollars that are coming from that are what we're looking at from the incentive payment. Where they are right now, we already get the tax dollars and benefits located from that facility. This is the new tax dollars that will be coming from this investment that's being specifically talked about in terms of what will be returned within that 75%. So I want folks to kind of separate and understand that piece. Now, when we talk about the company, are we talking about a company that has been a good steward in the community? And that's the thing, we also talk about the jobs that are created, but also the stewardship of the company as a community citizen in the terms of how they have engaged not only in doing their business, but their support of the community, and not just with their dollars, but also with personnel and personnel time out in the community, supporting neighbors and communities, particularly serving with our Police Benevolence Fund and others to support specifically what we're doing to touch people in neighborhoods and community. That's the type of company we're talking about. But that does not detract from the concerns that have been raised around equity, and we have to continue to hold those questions up far in terms of how we address the challenges of people in neighborhoods and communities accessing the jobs. In addition to that, one last thing I'll say before I be quiet and let us move on, is that when we talk about the opportunities for transparency and process, one of the very first things that I advocated for when I came on this council was the televising of our committee meetings. That was one of the first things that I advocated for. Prior to 2010, committee meetings were not televised. Either you came to the meetings, or you went and grabbed the minutes from online, you were not able to access those. And for me, it was a challenge, because most of the debate on our issues happened in our committee meetings. And so it was important enough for me to push and then for council to support the televising of the committee meetings so that more people in the public sphere could see what was happening in committee meetings. Since that time, we've also had conversations with city manager and with our TV-13 about after our meetings, how can we create narratives about what happened in the city council meeting so that people in the broader public can know what took place? And I bring those up so that people understand and know that there has been progress made in terms of transparency, but there's a whole lot more that we can do. But I want you to know where we've come from in this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Bur.
Well, we were one of the first cities
Well, we were one of the first cities to do televised meetings. And one thing that we need to keep in mind, people can come down and tell us what we're not doing. We know what we're doing. And if we want to be a city, that's going to be a city where people want to come, a livable place, then we must make certain decisions. And the decisions we make, we make for the welfare of the citizens in this community. On Friday, I had a meeting with the city manager and a minister and a citizen. We scheduled at 5:00 because that was convenient for them. And one thing in that meeting I said, and I said, go to the ministers and said, to the black ministers I was speaking about, sometimes you're the last ones to know. So those of you who go to church, to your churches, you should encourage your ministers to take on leadership ability. Come to these meetings, be a part. And also, you come down and you seem to think that the city is totally in charge. You need to go and stand before your county commissioners. You need to even take time to go to Raleigh and stand before them and take a trip to Washington. This is your city, and the welfare of this city should be for all of us to understand. And every time I vote for something, when it comes to talk about businesses, I will continue to vote as long as I feel it's going to be what's right for this total community. If you want a dead city, then tell us not to vote for this, and nobody will be coming here. And one thing I will say, when people look at this city, they look at the safety. We failed to say that. It's because it is a safe city.
Thank you, Councilmember Burp. We do have a motion in second. Councilmember Larson.
Just one quick comment. This is not a giveaway piece of land. I think it is an acquisition that will occur, and that will go, property that is currently not on the tax records will come on the tax record. So besides talking about jobs, retaining an iconic company in the city, growth potential, we've talked about opening a road, this is a kickstart for the whole Whittaker Park process. I think it's important to remember that this is not a giveaway, and we're going to get every cent of our investment back. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Mine is not. Mine is not.
Fair enough, okay. Motion passes unanimously, please. Thank you. Item three.
Item G3, Public Hearing on the Resolution Approving Economic Development Assistance to National General Insurance Company pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1 located in the North Ward, recommended by Finance Committee.
Mr. Rowley, if you again would give the report, please.
Certainly. Mayor joins members of council. This item authorizes the city to provide up to $335,563 in economic development assistance to National General Insurance Company, which is a property and casualty insurance company that's located in Madison Park, which is off of University Parkway on the north side of town. This assistance represents approximately 65% of the net new property and sales taxes that would be generated by this expansion project. The company is considering investing up to $12.2 million over a five-year period and creating 600, approximately 626 new jobs over that five-year period at an average wage of $55,553 in addition to benefits, the standard menu of benefits. So this again is a retention, well, an expansion project. Again, we are competing for the addition of 626 new jobs over a five-year period. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions?
Public hearing.
You have.
No question.
All right. Who put the motion?
Public hearing.
Mayor, we do need to have a public hearing in this particular matter. So you want to open up for a public hearing?
Yes. Yes, public hearing. Do I have the next question? Is this the one concerning Ms. Joanna? Oh, the first one is Ms. Jill. Say your last name so I can say it properly.
Jill Atherton.
Ms. Atherton, thank you.
My address is 411 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protown, members of the city council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce. I'm in support of the project National General potentially could have in our community. These are the types of jobs that we've been working hard for, and the jobs have the potential to create 626 new full-time jobs, and these would be jobs that could impact a significant number of educational backgrounds of folks. And we are certainly in support of this project. We would really like to have this project in our community and the potential for these jobs. And there are representatives here tonight from National General. Should you have any specific questions about the jobs, I'm sure they would be happy to answer those. But thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Joe Allen.
Joe Allen, this is the point exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about a national company, National General. There's nothing against National General, the fact that they're already here as well. It's not against an investment or anything like that, but we're talking about people who, companies, corporations, that's already here. So that tells me you all really don't know how to negotiate with the companies that's right here, that's already here in Winston-Salem. What this tells me is that we're not talking about, if I'm not mistaken, it's got to be over $400 million. They pay their CEOs, you know, their financial officers, more money than a little bit. But we turn around and say, okay, and I'm so tired of hearing about this tax base because you all have used it for years, and I'm here to tell you, it's not working anymore. Everything is, oh, but look at the revenue that it's going to bring in to, you know, for the tax basis for the city. That is so old. Please come up with something new. Because first of all, as I stated earlier, we turn around, yeah, they may pay $20,000 or $200,000 at the end of the year, and then we turn around and give them back $75,000, and this is just an example, for the next 20 years, the next 10 years, the next 30 years. So that means that we don't get that money back into our own general fund or where it should go. Therefore, we can't put money back into the communities where it should go, where we've got people who are suffering. That's what the problem is here. And you all are so conscious-minded that, oh, we got to do this because that's the only way we're going to grow. If that was the case, then we would have grown 20 years ago, or 15 years ago, or even 10 years ago. And let me say this very quickly. If we have received all of this money coming from taxes on the new buildings that we had, then number one, we shouldn't be up here asking, meaning you all, for a new bond that's over 130-some million dollars, okay? If we've got all of this tax money coming back for this tax base, then we don't need a new bond. So either we do or we don't. Either you know what you're doing or you don't. Either we need to take this partisan, you know, oh, yeah, we need to do this. We need to do it now because we got other issues that's more important. And I'm sure if National General really wanted to stay here, they can go anywhere they want, just like Med Corp or Medical Corp. But the problem is, is this, it's going to cost them money to move as well. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on this proposed economic development project? Mr. Carter.
Philip Carter, 1148 East Fifth Street. I was at the Finance Committee meeting, and I really liked hearing from the lady who spoke last week who said that these jobs are not like a lot of jobs to worry about how education is needed, but that many, many, many people with simply on high school education would be able to get a job. And I was most impressed with the salary, which she said most of them, or they may possibly be able to start with $38,000. And I think that's good for a person who may be young or even older. But again, all I would ask is, is that we try to ensure that of them 624 jobs, that we include demographics in it, you know what I mean? And again, I would ask that we work together with our school system to ensure that we have educated people, all of us, to be able to get those jobs. So I like the 624 jobs, I like the $38,000, I like the fact that many high school people were getting. So again, let's work together here and try to ensure that all of our citizens, and I will alliterate, especially those that of our African-American and other minority descent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else like to be heard on this proposed economic development project? Seeing that one, I declare the public hearing closed. Would recognize again, Councilmember Adams, Vice Chair of Finance.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Rowley, could you tell us again the demographics of National?
Certainly, Councilmember Adams. Based on the information that the company has provided, approximately 28% of the company's local workforce, which is about 1,250 employees, is our minority. The company also has a local workforce that's more than 63% female.
Thank you. Mayors, members, oh, let me get the motion. Mayors, members of the council, I move for approval of item G3 on Economic Development Assistance to National General Insurance Company.
Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh.
Just curious if Mr. Evans could, Mr. Rowley could explain how long these incentives are in place for?
Certainly. Councilmember McIntosh, this particular deal, the incentive will remain in place for a five-year period.
And after, what happens after that five-year period?
After the five-year period, the city will capture all of the net new property and sales tax that's been generated by the project.
Thank you very much. Councilman Clark.
I would like to throw out a number that hasn't been thrown out on this yet, and that's $32 million. You take 626 employees, times $55,000 a year, that's how many dollars they're going to put in this community through paychecks, $32 million a year, and that'll go to help people buy a house, pay the rent, buy a car, whatever it may be. That's a lot of money.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery.
If the council would entertain it, I know there was a representative here from National General, and I think the number specifically to the hiring and the demographics is something, again, just for the greater public.
Have the representative from National General, please. If you would give your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, councilmembers. Nicole Pemberton, 5630 University Parkway, Winston-Salem. Yes, as I mentioned last week, National General is excited about the potential of expansion here in Winston-Salem. Our positions aren't just for the advanced degrees. We do have opportunities for those with high school diplomas. We are paying a competitive wage, and we're looking forward to hopefully being able to contribute and add more jobs in the community. As we said last week, it is a win-win, and we are excited about our diverse workforce, and we're continuing to focus on increasing that. So we definitely are here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for being with us tonight. All right, we do have a motion in second to approve this particular project. Those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. The motion passes unanimously, please. Thank you very much. Item G4.
Item G4, Resolution Approving the Biloxi Avenue Traffic Calming Plan for Funding and Construction Located in the East Ward. Public Works Committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor and one opposed.
The, I know that the chairman did not support this item, so I would entertain a motion from the vice chairman if he'd like to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move approval of this item.
Second. Councilmember Bessie, you'd like to speak on this?
Just briefly, I don't want to belabor the point, but this is another example of different unintended adverse consequences from a traffic calming project that does not take into account impact on neighboring streets. In this case, there were speed humps that were installed on Solomon Drive a few years ago. I cautioned at the time that the next street that would be adversely impacted if those speed humps went in on Solomon would be Biloxi, and here we are considering Biloxi. Again, no one was polled except for the approximately eight homes on Biloxi itself. I predict that we will be facing another and cascading series of requests after approval and installation of this. I believe potentially Shepherd Grove would be next. And none of the hundreds of households depending on these entrances in the developments behind those shorter entrance streets is being asked about these projects at any point. So we are not getting a true representation of everybody who is impacted by these projects. Therefore, I've got to vote against this one and will continue to urge that we revise our review process so that everyone who is impacted by these projects has a voice in their design.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, as Councilmember Bessie knows and members of the council, again, you know, when we began offering calming initiatives to communities and we tout that we want communities to determine their destinies of their neighborhood, we have talked about the impact of traffic calming bumps, or whatever you want to call it. Again, I will always vote if a community thinks their street is getting too much traffic or they're speeding through there. And as you said, yes, there's a rippling effect, but it should not be that my street should be held hostage because another street next door, next over from me, doesn't want my street to have the calming effects because they're afraid of what's coming next to them. My suggestion to the council, Public Works, city manager, city attorney, again, we need to go out and benchmark, we need to go find what other people are doing because this is not going to stop. Now, since I've been on the council, there is not a meeting that goes by that we don't approve two or three streets with traffic calming. And until we can come up with some better solutions, Mayor, we're going to continue to see this because more cars are riding, more people, and when Forty shuts down, we might see 10 or 20 of these at every meeting.
Councilmember Montgomery and Councilmember McIntosh.
Just one, this is one of those areas that, in principle, around traffic calming and the speed bumps, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Bessie, around what we do from always using the speed humps or speed bumps in neighborhoods. But at the end of the day, when I've been in this neighborhood, and Ms. Claudette Bailey, who's in here in Pecan Ridge, a couple of years back, we went door to door in the neighborhood, knocking on doors to get signatures from individuals who were talking about their children and their family in the neighborhood where cars were speeding, and they wanted to slow down the traffic in that neighborhood. And if that's what the neighbors come together and say they want, I'm going to support that as long as that's still something that's on the table for us to do. Until we change the policy, I'm going to support the neighbors in that neighborhood who say these are the things they want to do to slow traffic down in their neighborhood.
Councilmember McIntosh.
I'm going to agree. That's our policy. I know that there are lots of unintended consequences with vertical traffic calming measures, is that the correct term? But I've been through enough of these public meetings with our staff and with engaged neighborhoods, the options are spelled out to them, and as long as those options are spelled out with the potential negatives that we all know can exist, and they still vote to go ahead, it's awfully hard to say no to the folks who are most affected by it.
We have a motion to approve. All those in favor indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes. Six in favor, two against. Thank you very much. Item G5.
Item G5, Resolution Authorizing the City of Winston-Salem to Apply for Fiscal Year 2018 U.S. Department of Labor Youth Bill Grant in the Amount of $1,100,000. This item was forwarded without a recommendation by Finance Committee but was recommended by the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
I recognize, I guess, Councilmember Montgomery, Chairman of the CD Housing and General Government Committee, if you're ready for a motion.
I am. And a comment?
Yes.
I move for approval of item G5.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
One, we've been the recipient of this youth bill grant in years past that has paid great dividends of giving opportunity to young people in the community, particularly those who have had challenges and barriers to employment in the community. One of the areas that I did raise, and I still will raise again tonight, is in reference to the type of training that individuals receive. The grant allows for us to be a little bit innovative in terms of how we train individuals. Yes, there needs to be something.
Yes, there needs to be something in and around the construction trades, but we can be more innovative in terms of the type of skills that we're training people for, um, and that's what I want us to, to be able to do and to focus on our ability to be innovative in that job, or how are these construct, construction jobs translating over to other opportunities? Whether you're looking at, uh, high-tech in construction, you have now the ability to have, uh, a, a brick-laying machine that goes up against a building and lays brick. How are we training individuals to utilize these machines and utilize this type of technology in construction so that when jobs change, we're helping to prepare? That's the kind of question I ask in committee, and I don't know, Mr. Riley, if you can mention anything about those opportunities.
Certainly.
Certainly. Councilmember Montgomery, um, there are several additional tracks in addition to the construction that is proposed as, uh, being included with this particular application, uh, just to, to name a few of those other sort of industries that we are proposing to, to provide training in, uh, healthcare, transportation and logistics, advanced manufacturing and aviation. We have, um, tried to, uh, address and hit some of the in-demand career fields in this particular area and integrate that into the training that's, uh, would be a part of this grant.
Good. All right, thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say very briefly, for those who aren't familiar with the program, uh, Youth Build is a program that takes young men and women in our communities between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four and teaches them a skill in the construction trade. Also, those young men and women have the opportunity to get their GEDs if they were, uh, for some reason dropped out of high school, so it's a very good program. We were funded by the federal government at one point in time. It's a program we had to sort of take on ourselves and implement, uh, in partnership with the SOAR program that works with former offenders. So I have heard a reoccurring theme about, you know, job readiness and, uh, skill building. So this is a program that the city does implement, uh, with the help of a federal grant formally, but it's something that we do currently without that help, uh, to continue to get those youths moving in the right direction. So this is a win-win for all parties, and to continue to support the youth in the community. I'm happy to be supporting it this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously. We thank you. Item G six.
Item G six, resolution establishing the process for filling the vacancy on the Winston-Salem City Council.
A bittersweet item, as we are talking about the process to, uh, fill the vacancy of our, our colleague, uh, Councilmember Montgomery, who is moving up to the, uh, General Assembly. Uh, I'm going to ask the City Attorney, if you would, to just review the proposed process that the City Council and I would, and, and use in this particular situation.
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Portem, councilmembers, as you know, um, there is a local act that deals with filling the vacancy on the City Council, and then there's a statutory provision that deals with, uh, filling the vacancy on the City Council pursuant to the local act. Because there are more than twelve months left in the term of Councilmember Montgomery, the local act calls for an election process. But if you use the statute, the statute clearly points out the appointment is made by City Council. The statute does not set forth a process the council would use if it was going to appoint the replacement for Councilmember Montgomery. Basically, you have generally two options. One is a motion and vote, and vote process. The other one is a nomination and ballot process. And so what you have before you is a nomination and ballot process. And essentially, what you would do is basically, once Councilmember Montgomery tenders his resignation and council accepts that, and of course, the mayor could do that on behalf of council, the vacancy is created at that point in time, even if Councilmember Montgomery effectively resigns at a future date. But the point that's tendered and accepted by council, the vacancy is created. So under this nomination and ballot process, what you would do essentially is take applications for the vacancy. The application, since it's the East Ward, the person would have to be a resident of the East Ward, have to be a Democrat, and there's, I think there's one other qualification. Um, you would take those applications, receive those applications, and then council, at a meeting basically, would go through the process of nominating individuals from the applicant pool to fill that slot, fill that vacancy. Once the mayor council receives those nominations and all nominations are received and closed, then you go through a process of voting, until you basically have the person who's received the majority of those votes elected as the person to, appointed as that person to fill that seat. As a part of the process, when you get down to two individuals in the voting process, at that point, council could take or receive comment, comments from both of the applicants at that point, when you get down, say for instance, you have eight, you narrow it down to two through the voting process. Those last two candidates, you would receive comments from them, however long you wanna receive the comments, and then go through the final voting process, and whoever receives the majority of votes would be the person appointed to fill the vacancy. That's essentially in a nutshell.
Basically, also, just to, just to clarify a little bit, uh, once the resignation is tendered and accepted, we'd make an advertisement, and there'd be a fourteen-day period that the city would receive applications. Uh, the city would ask those who are interested to give their resume, as well as provide a brief statement, no more than five hundred words, about what they think of the key issues facing the city, as well as three key issues facing, uh, the East Ward. And then based on that, the City Council would have that available to, to you to make the nominations. Any further questions of Ms. Carmen? If not, I would entertain, oh, excuse me.
It's more of a comment. Two things that I've heard in, uh, uh, from concerns about this process is just in the sense of, um, there's the possib, this talks about the filling, predominantly the filling of the vacancy that would be created by my resignation, uh, but there is the possibility, uh, that we could have other vacancies on the council based upon individuals being elected to other roles. And one of the concerns I heard out there was to, uh, some type of surety that if we utilize this process, that its consistency used in, um, how we do the appointment process. And so I know as long as Angela Carmen is the City Attorney, she'll enforce that, but please share in terms of, for some people to understand, uh, how we can ensure consistency if we utilize an appointment process.
Basically, the statute, again, is silent as to what process to be used or council is to use in filling or making that appointment. It's up to council to decide what process to use. Certainly, if council decides, in this particular instance, to, to use the nomination and ballot process, it's conceivable that if there are other vacancies, that council could choose to use the same process, nomination and ballot process, to fill those other vacancies as well, but it's, it's totally up to council.
And you answered the second question that, that was there, was in terms of who decides whether or not you, you have an election or if you use the ballot process, and that's council decides which method to use in the process.
Right, because the, the charter would call for, if more than twelve months remain in the term, an election process. The statute says council makes that appointment. The council can decide whether or not it wants to use the local act or charter provision or the statute.
Right, and I just, those were concerns I heard, and I just wanted to raise that up so that people could know what those are.
In my conversations with the, the council, it was clear that everyone was, thought about a potential special election, but I think given the timeframe and all of it, but it was very clear that everyone wanted a very open process and a process that anyone who was interested would have an opportunity to submit applications. So let me get a motion on the floor if I could.
I move approval.
Sir, second.
Second.
Second, and then Councilmember Burke.
Yes, the other question I would like to ask, some have said, why not put those names on the ballot in November, so you need to explain why we would not?
I think that the thought, in my discussions with the council, is that just given the short timeframe between now and November and getting the ballots, uh, printed and, and advertised, plus the cost of, of the election itself, which the city would have to bear our portion of that being added to, to the ballot, is what I heard, Councilmember. Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Haynes, we learned of his resignation, I would say, a couple of weeks ago, and I will say I wish him the best in his, uh, next step. I'm, we're not quite sure what it is, but wish him the best. Uh, the Forsyth County Democratic Party nominated or recommended Mr. Montgomery, and the governor has consequently, I don't know if he appointed or what the correct term is, but I wish you the best as well. When the mayor called me about this, at that time, I said I think a special election is appropriate, and therefore I will not be supporting this motion tonight. I find it ironic that tonight we have voted for two traffic calming motions because we think the people should make the decision. Yet tonight, we're gonna ask seven of the eight people that are gonna vote on this motion do not live in the East Ward. And I can just say this, I do not think a white Republican from the West Ward should be picking which Democrat should support the East Ward. I don't buy the argument of cost, we could have our own special election, there's only ten or eleven precincts or so, there's eleven in the West Ward. I think democracy doesn't have a price to it, and I don't think we're talking about that many dollars, and the fact this is a, uh, he has not even served a half of his term. And the other thing that was just mentioned, and I don't know what's gonna happen, as y'all know, Ms. Adams and, uh, Mr. Bessie are also involved in elections this fall. If we, if they won, and who knows what, I certainly don't predict elections, but we could conceivably have, uh, three of the eight people sitting up here that were not elected by their constituents if we use this same process again. So I think we need to put the checkbook down and let the citizens of the East Ward decide who they want. And I, I certainly think they made a good decision, uh, two years ago and six years ago in picking Mr. Montgomery, and I trust them to, to pick the next person. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve the proposed process as described by the City Attorney, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes, uh, five in favor, three, uh, opposed to it. And then we'll get to item G seven.
Item G seven, consideration of council's November meeting schedule.
Councilmembers, as you know, we need to move the committees and the proposed second, um, council meeting of the month back a week because of Veterans Day coming on, uh, the first time we'll be, we're celebrating that particular holiday, and it did interfere with the committees, so the proposal is to move all those back by, uh, one week. Move approval.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, um, all those in favor of the motion to change the meeting schedule, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you, that does pass unanimously.
Mayor?
All right, Councilmember.
Before we go into public, uh, comment period, uh, there was an item, uh, that I think may be pertinent for a public comment in reference to Crystal Tower.
You wanna, go ahead.
Um, there, there's been a lot of conversation that's been had over this past week in reference to Crystal Tower and the sale of Crystal Tower. Um, in conversation, there have been response, uh, from many members of council with a high level of concern about what will happen, um, with Crystal Tower, the people and residents in Crystal Tower. As subsequent, um, as Chair of the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee, uh, I will call forward for halls to come for a hearing at the, uh, General Government, uh, Committee so that we can have an in-depth conversation in reference to that, and also have the opportunity for some public, uh, engagement at that time for the public, because there's been a lot of conversation in reference to that, and so I wanna afford that opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Burke also had a, an item before we.
Yes, I would like for Mr. Riley to give us some information concerning the airport. I don't know how many of you have been keeping up with this, there's a great change that was changed by the commissioners and the legislators, and Mr. Riley, would you just give us some information? Because we have not had any, or if we have, very few public people, and it's been talked about, but the public just hasn't said anything much about it.
Certainly. Mayor Portem Burke, um, there have been a number of, um, actions, uh, that have been taken recently, uh, at the airport that the public may, uh, be interested to know about, and I'll touch, uh, on, on two separate areas. First, very briefly, is legislative actions that have been taken recently, um, governing the control of the airport, and the second is on the proposed, uh, facility enhancements that may be taking place at the airport that, uh, some individuals may be interested in. Uh, on the legislative action side, in May of this year, Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, uh, elected to make a request to the state legislature that the Airport Commission essentially be dissolved and to bring the assets and control of the airport under the auspices of the county. That, uh, request made its way to the state legislature in the form of HB 1058, which was, uh, ratified by the state legislature at the end of June. So essentially, again, that, that took the control of the assets of the Airport Commission and transferred them to the county. On the, the facility side, facility side, uh, there are a number of, um, enhancements that are proposed to take place at the airport grounds totaling approximately seventy million dollars. Uh, some of those enhancements include the Forsyth Tech Aviation Center, uh, some new signage, uh, and lighting at the airfield, uh, but one of the more significant projects is the, the shifting of taxiway A. At the present moment, taxiway A is too close to the runway, and so, uh, there is a proposed project that would move, uh, and enhance the distance between the runway and taxiway A, which may have some impact, if it is approved, on some of the, the properties that are joined that are right near the airport. Uh, my understanding after speaking with Mr. Mark Davidson, who was the airport director earlier this afternoon, is that, uh, they have not gotten final approval from the FAA A for funding for the moving of that taxiway, but should they move, should they receive the funding, there's the potential for several homes on Teresa Avenue to potentially be, to be moved as a part of that project, uh, but he cautioned me that should that project take place, that of course, any relocation, uh, would necessitate the airport paying fair market value for the properties, and he also, uh, indicated that if the funding does come through for the F, from the FAA for that particular project, that likely nothing would happen with respect to relocating those properties that would be then in essentially the area of the new taxiway until, uh, 2020 or, or 2021.
Thank you. Now, Mayor, members of this, uh, council, what you need to understand is this, it was Commissioner Ted Captain who pushed for the airport not to be a part of the city. And then he had the help of Representative Conrad to push it with those legislators in Raleigh. Now, the Chamber of Commerce did a study, and looking at that study, there were things that should have been done more in that particular area. So what the mayor did, uh, he formed a committee, and this committee has been meeting. And what you need to understand, those who hold their flag up of what ought to be or not be done as far as the minority neighborhood, if when you go down Carver School Road coming from New Walker Town Road, and you make a left turn into Carver School, you get to Teresa. When you look over at Teresa, you see that runway right in the door of the folks. Now, I have said, uh, when some things people need to be talking about, they're mom. Anytime they want to put that airport landing that much closer to where people are living, it is a shame. But it was up to Mr. Conrad and those commissioners. He didn't stop until he got what he wanted. He didn't stop until he gave, sent it on to Raleigh, and Representative Conrad pushed on. I said to the city manager, I don't care if they are doing what they're doing, we are still responsible for the citizens in that area that is still sitting in the city. And you need to explain, uh, city manager, why do they, because you were in quite with it then, he was started earlier, why did they do all of what they wanted to do, and why did they have this type of attitude?
Mayor Portem Burke, uh, there are a couple of different reasons. I think primarily because they didn't wanna be, uh, subject to city property taxes on their planes, as well as, uh, our, our rules, stormwater rules and other rules and fees that we charge if you're in the city. They wanted to be free of all that.
And see, they had the right. How many of you went to the county commission meetings when you're flipping your mouths about some things about that? We didn't hear a sound.
Councilmember, excuse me.
Thank you for that, that report.
Councilmember Taylor had a.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, I'll try to be brief. I just wanna state for the record that I am adamantly opposed to the sale of Crystal Towers by the Housing Authority. I'm happy that Mr. Montgomery has agreed to bring this to the committee for, for conversation, and just as a point of information, I want everybody to know that the City Council has absolutely nothing to do with the sale of Crystal Towers. That was a decision that was made by the Housing Authority, and that decision rests alone with the Housing Authority. We can say whether we are satisfied or dissatisfied with that, uh, potential purchase or sale, uh, but we have absolutely nothing to do with that, and I am opposed to the sale. I think it disenfranchises, uh, those who might be senior citizens, those who might be disabled, and I haven't necessarily seen a clear plan for how we move folks out of that building back into the community with the voucher process. Secondly, uh, as the Chair of Public Safety, Carly Williams was here, and she brought up some, uh, concerns about sort of, uh, the Edward McQuaid case, and I know there are things that we can and cannot say, but Madam, uh, City Attorney, if you can just maybe give us an update on, on, uh, the, the Edward McQuaid case as it stands, uh, locally, and if you wanna ask some information about the state statute, that'd be good as well.
Let me start out.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mayor. Mayor Portem Burke, councilmembers, if I could.
Mayor Proten Burke, council members, if I can, let me start out with the state statute. A couple of years ago, the General Assembly changed the state statute, basically precluding cities from releasing the body worn camera footage without a court order. Prior to the change in the statute, the city basically had the authority, the ability, to release that footage. Anyone who wanted or objected to that had to go get a court order to preclude, to prevent the release of that footage. Now, it's flipped. The city is no longer able to do that. We can't just simply release the footage. We have to get a court order. In this particular instance, the general did file a petition for the release of the footage to the media. The DA's office and the family objected to the release of the footage. And consequently, a judge entered an order precluding the release of the body worn camera footage. And that's where things stand at this point. I understand the DA's office is working to try to, at some point, hopefully within the near future, make a statement and eventually release the body worn camera footage. But at this point in time, pursuant to the court order, it is not releaseable.
Thank you, ma'am. And one last point, Mayor, if I may. Ms. Williams, I know she's probably at home watching, and it's my responsibility to address those members who come to City Hall, which is the people's house, who have concerns. And she brought up some major concerns about Easton Park. And the truth of the matter is, 10 years ago, Easton Park was a wreck. It was a place where gangs gathered. It was a place where graffiti was on the walls all the time. But over the last 10-year period, we have worked to redevelop Easton Park. We've created a new playground. We've worked to have a new flower bed, a new track. And we've worked with the residents of the community to make sure that's a place that people want to go and play and relax. It's unfortunate that, you know, some of the members of Easton in the back do not have sewer. It's a problem that I did not create, but it is a problem that we are currently working to address. This upcoming bond referendum, I know we've been very successful in the southeast ward with bond referendums. But there is an item on the bond referendum that would add sewer to the park at Easton Park in the back, which makes it easier for those neighbors to potentially connect to sewer. So, it's not a problem that we created, but we do have a plan to address it. I wish you were serious so that we could have that discussion. But I did want to just say that that doesn't eliminate the concerns that she has. There's still some work that we need to do. We've made some progress, and we'll continue to make progress going forward. But I will be calling you, Ms. Williams, and we'll talk through it neighbor to neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bessie had a quick.
Just a quick point. I would note that I share the concern of council members, Montgomery and Taylor, regarding the sale of, both sale of Crystal Towers. I think it raises real questions about whether the people who are most in need of assisted housing are going to be able to continue to receive it in the city. And I would like for the public to understand that the Housing Authority is not under the direct control of the city council. The Housing Authority is a quasi-independent public corporation which has its own board and makes its own decisions regarding its property. We can only seek to influence their decision-making in the use or disposal of their property. We cannot dictate to them. But I think this is a case in which it is very reasonable for us to say, "Please come and explain to us so that the public can hear the discussion of the pros and cons of that potentially problematic sale."
Thank you. And Counselor Montgomery and I did discuss that, and it felt like it was very appropriate for him as committee to hold a hearing on that and ask the Housing Authority staff and chairman to come and make their presentation. Mr. Burke.
Yes, when I got the information, I immediately contacted the city manager. And I told him that something like this would create a lot of unrest. People who cannot speak for themselves seems like we're taking advantage of them. Of course, he answered me and said that we had something to do with zoning, and that would be all. I said, "Well, we need to have some information concerning this matter because they are citizens in this community. And as a city manager, in our form of government, you are the city manager, and you manage this city. And you have a mayor and eight elected officials. And these elected officials let you know what we want to happen and not to happen. And it's not going to be like a Hope Six program. I don't think it'll be like that. And it's going to be, we need to make sure that the people who cannot stand up, who do not express themselves, that we be concerned deeply about them."
Thank you. All right, we do have item G eight.
Item G eight, public comment period.
This is the time we invite citizens to address the city council on, me and the city council on matters of germane to city government. Ask that you would give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. First person signed up is Dee Washington.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to be quite honest. I came here, my name is Dee Washington. I reside at 841 Rich Avenue, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And I am here as a citizen and a resident of the East Ward. I am also here as the pending vice chair for the Forsyth County Democratic Party's Precinct 402. And I am, I've been sitting in the back of the room trying to get myself together because I'm appalled. I am appalled and ashamed because we talk about people who cannot speak for themselves and that we are taking advantage. And I have the ability to speak for myself, and I am here. The statement that I had prepared for this evening was a statement that was a collaboration of precinct chairs and residents that met and discussed the seat that Councilmember Montgomery will be vacating. And I think it is appropriate that I make some edits based on what's happened here tonight. The term appointment, which is being used in Section 160A-63, is not synonymous with the words select, elect, or nominate. A point refers to the duty as a council that you have to replace the vacant seat. It refers to your duty and responsibility. However, the North Carolina General Statute does not make clear the process, which is ambiguous. But even in its ambiguity, it does not endorse the disenfranchisement of the voters. By not allowing voters to participate in the appointment as elected officials, you are willfully abridging the rights of the voters, and I am one of them. A vetting of applicants by the council, no matter how well-intentioned, would put each council member and subsequently each ward as gatekeepers to the responsibility of selecting a representative for 10,896 citizens and voters in the East Ward. To be more specific, that would mean that the value of each council member's votes would stand for 1,362 voters in the East Ward. That's a heavy load, to say the least, and not one that is appropriate or ethical for the council to bear. If the roles were reversed, I'm sure no registered voter or citizen of any ward would want council members or any outside parties to elect their representation, the representation of their interests on financial and civic matters.
Miss Washington, your time is up. Would you like to summarize very briefly, please?
Yes, it sets a dangerous precedent for all wards within Winston-Salem, especially, thank you very much, Councilman Clark. You know, it sets a dangerous precedent for all wards within Winston-Salem, especially for Republican members of the council to select a seat held by an elected Democrat. It is, is that not a conflict of interest?
Thank you, Miss Washington. Harold Day.
Lord, I've sat so long, Harold.
We missed you.
Have you really? Harold Day, 1422 South Main, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. I come tonight to thank the mayor and council for making a proclamation for Bowman Gray Stadium. Seventy years of racing presented by Mr. Larson, well-received by the fans. I'd like to commend Mr. Garrity, and then he left, I reckon.
He's back there.
Oh, is he? They have done a wonderful job this year at the stadium. We had a lot of parking problems. We worked through them. Mr. Ral came up with an alternate plan at Forest Park for the last race. It came from raining around us, and we didn't need it. But it's not a real good plan, but it was good for Plan B to start with. But it's three-quarters of a mile to walk to the stadium. Would you go to Baptist Hospital Park to go to the ballgame? Only difference is that people go into the ballgame. This year, there was thousands, literally thousands, participant fans coming every week. A lot of kids under 10 are free. Free parking, which is great. There's a TV crew there, some of you don't know. It's been filming all summer with 15 or 20 people filming everywhere except the bathrooms. I don't think I saw them in the bathroom, but they were there everywhere. This is going to be aired sometime this fall or winter on national TV. I don't know which channel, Discovery History, wherever. But they wouldn't spend this kind of money unless they thought something of the Winston-Salem, of Bowman Gray Stadium. We lost a lot of parking spots with the research Parkway, a lot. I've done a little head count over parking spots. I rode around one day. It's about 2,300 marked spots. Now, if you go get a permit to build a building, you've got to get so many parking spots for so many people. It's going to be way under that. Our suggestion would consider Civil Ten Park, cross that little ranch right there, and go in there and get us another 200 or 300 spots in that grassy area. I thank you for your support of Bowman Gray Stadium, and all the fans come from Wada. This movie goes big. We will have more fans, more motels, restaurants coming up this season. Mr. Larson brought the tourism people over. The city man, he'd never been before. And then a few weeks later, the state tourism people were there that we didn't know was going to be there. So, we're getting on the map, and this show will make it even better. So, we need to make sure we got good parking. Mr. Garrity's staff really worked good. There weren't no tickets issued. We bought a lot of yellow rope. I don't know what we're going to do with it now, but we got a lot of yellow rope.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Annika Annett.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey. Hey, I'm Annika Annett, and I am the president of a rising progressive party out of the East Ward community. Due to the large black and brown constituency prevalent in our East Ward community, I feel most dutiful and obligated to present a clear argument contesting the appointment, quote unquote, of Derwin Montgomery's vacancy. So, as said, we've heard a couple of people already, including Ms. Washington, on the NC General Statute, which reads in 160A-63, vacancies in appointed offices shall be filled by the same authority that makes initial appointment. And who else has made the initial appointment than the residents of the East Ward for Derwin Montgomery? And we all, we all in the East Ward, residents of East Ward, should definitely have a say-so. And who is elected, not appointed, who was elected in East Ward? So, we make sure that we are not still, we are not still snowballing into economic development that's not going anywhere. We have not seen anything. Everything I have seen regarding the residents, most of the residents in East Ward, which are in poverty, which are displaced because of gentrification, all I've seen is gentrification. And we want to be sure that we definitely have a say-so. And who has our lives in their hands? Because I actually am a resident of East Ward, so is my children, so is a lot of people that want to see change around the East Ward that we haven't seen much of unless it is coming from the expense of the poor. And just like Ms. Washington also reiterate about the difference between the appointment and being elected. I'm sorry, I'm a little lost. It's my first time, so just kind of bear with me.
You're doing good.
Thank you. There is actually still clear that Derwin does have a successor. And it clearly, the NC General Statute of 160A-63 also clearly states, "A successor shall be elected at the next regularly scheduled city election that is held more than 90 days after the vacancy occurs. The person appointed to fill vacancy shall serve only until the elected successor takes office." So, we definitely want everybody to be held accountable, including Derwin, on who we are getting to fill that space and who else to decide that than East Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Washington. Philip Carter, oh, excuse me.
I need to ask the attorney a question. The comment about how, really, it would have been good had they spoken before we even took the spoke. But how would they then be involved about who they would like to see represent the East Ward?
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Burke, you have the option of using the provision that's in the local act, the charter, which, because there's more than 12 months left on the term, it would call for an election in the ward. That's under the local act or following the statutory provision. And because this is an elective office, council can appoint the person to fill the vacancy.
I understand that part because we voted. But I'm saying, how could they still have some input with us in the decision that we would be making?
They are certainly welcome.
Excuse me, ma'am.
They are certainly welcome if they're interested. Once the application process begins, they're certainly welcome to apply, like any other resident of the East Ward that's a member of the Democratic Party and meets the qualifications set forth in the resolution that was adopted. And certainly, to the extent council wants to have public input before the decision's made, council can very well amend the resolution to provide for that. Does that answer your question?
Well, indirectly. But what I was thinking, all of you who are interested in who you want, then you send me information of who you would like to see. That will help me to make a decision on who I will be supporting. And they can send it to each of us. So, that means you get together in the ward, and you all come up with what you all think would be something that we need to hear. And then I would hope that we would give the respect to the words that you are saying. So, that's, that's.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
Philip Carter, 1148 East Fifth Street. That man was giving us respect. Republican Robert Clark. He was giving us respect. You saw me leaving the Board of Elections last week. I went in and spoke with Tim. Tim told me we have $250,000 that was given by the Forsyth County Commissioners. It is still there. That a special election wouldn't cost nothing. That's what he said. Now, Mr. Robert, Mr. Young is here tonight, over there, the news reporter. So, Mr. Clark, they like to allege that President Donald Trump participated in collusion. But tonight, I have witnessed collusion to proliferate cronyism. That statute does not give any terms or definition of residency. So, now we have a person who just changed their residency on August the 15th. Then I hear of turning your names in the council. What good is that if them seven is going to vote on the individual as if they are registered members of the ward? This is the most egregious act I've ever seen in my life, the disenfranchisement of African-American people who are subjugated to marginalization and disenfranchisement. It's a shame. It's a travesty. But it's an honor that you hear because you spoke with integrity. You spoke as one who believes in democracy. You all, I've never witnessed nothing like this in all the days of my life. This is one night, as Chair, second Vice Chair of Forsyth County Democratic Party, as a North Carolina State Executive Committee member, I am ashamed. Let me remind you, as my 95-year-old mama told me when I left today, what's good for the chicken is good for the rooster. If you can take our vote, then I urge every other African-American in this city If you can take our vote, then I urge every other African-American in this city and every other Democrat to not give their votes come November the seventh.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard during public comment? Yes.
Joe Allen, P.O. Box two eight four two seven one oh two. It is so sad that so many people in Winston-Salem have suffered through the actions and enactions of the city council and past councils. It is the people who are currently suffering the most, whose parents and great-grandparents working for R.J. Reynolds, Pete Mount Airlines, and Haynes Hosey, who made Winston-Salem an international force in the world. Cronyism and corruption is alive and well in Winston-Salem. Where are our ministers, both black and white and so-called community leaders, tonight to speak out against what this and previous councils have done to our communities and the people? Could it be that most of them also get a piece of the pie for their church and private projects and just turn a blind eye? Mayor Protem Vivian Burke is considered by some to be a slumlord, whose properties get special treatment due to her position. You are the first to always talk about transparency, but everything isn't transparent from you. Do we understand what a bully is? Mr. Derwin Montgomery, you have done nothing of substance in East Winston for the community other than push the black community further backwards. People do actually see who you are. Even during slave slavery, we had some slaves that wanted to continue to be taken care of by the master. Mr. Jeff McIntosh, during your previous campaigns, you talked about bringing your expertise in real estate to the city council. The flaw to your expertise is that it leaves out putting the people first. Tell the people how your pockets have increased in size. Mayor Jones, do you remember, I see he's laughing, but that's okay. Do you remember making this statement in two thousand and two? What we said from the outset is that we would never ask the local government for money and that we would be totally transparent in everything we did so there would be no conflicts. This was the, with the Winston-Salem Alliance. Apparently, this isn't a truthful statement, is it? Your private nonprofits, the Winston-Salem Alliance, the Millennium Fund, Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, Winston-Salem Business, Inc., the, the Littica Park Development Authority, and others have received millions from my city government. This also includes Mr. Bob Leek, owner of the Union Cross Business Park, Mr. Dunflo, and others, including your investments in the BB&amp;T Ballpark with Billy Prim, owner of the Dash. There is no more hiding behind the black voices. We see all of you. And I just have one last thing with my twenty-four seconds. If we can get, um, city attorney Angela Carmen to tell us what basis or criteria you use to show that there is no conflict of interest with Ms. Dee Dee Adams. Thank you.
Anyone else during public comment? Mr. Suggs.
You said, Sir, executive director, action for now. Again, notice to agent is notice to principal, and notice to principal is notice to agent. I too, as Philip Carter did, would appreciate what you did, Mr. Clark. And this is my night to talk, 'cause last time I saw you during the honorable meeting, you say, "Oh, this wasn't your night to talk." It wasn't my mission that night. Tonight, it is my mission. You have an oath that you all have taken. Your oath is, is your bond. You are fiduciary trustees of the people. So, every one of you, and Lee, I want a copy of it. Every one of you that just voted to take the voice out of the people, you have just showed your hand to the people. How can you sit up here and talk about transparency? How can you talk, sit up here and talk about, "You are about the people"? You just demonstrated how to take the voice out of the people. That goes against the Latin that's behind your screen right there. You supposed to be able to bring on assistance to the cities, to this twin city, but you're voting to take out the voice of the people? And you act like it can't amend it? You know what that means, Ms. Burke. What good would it do to send something to you and you all just voted to take it out? The games we played, the games we play with the people. You sat up here when it's packed and y'all front like you about the people? And you, when it came to that period, no one made mention about, where anybody in the public got anything to say? It was obvious. But it, it happened before you got here. 'Cause any, every one of you that said, even you mayor, when you was asked about, have you talked to any of the members? You said you had limited conversation. Limited means limited. Limited means limited. This is important to the people of the East Ward. Where is the unanimous decision of all the city council members? Everybody should've been, "It's about the special election." No one should've been about, "Well, are we gonna appoint it to take away the people?" How does that sound? As Malcolm X once said, "That's an assault on our intelligence." That is an assault on the people's intelligence. I appreciate you saying that, Robert. I do. It means a lot to the people. You can't sit up here and put the people down, but yet want the people to put you up. You think everybody's a coward, Mr. Taylor? No. No. You will hear from the people. If you do not amend it, there will be an injunction. Trust and believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to hear in public comment? Yes.
Sean Hawkins, fourteen fifty-five Emerald Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I'm also the precinct chair of four oh two. I'm the chairman of the precinct. And I walked in my communities and in my precinct to find out what the voters want. They don't want this. They don't, they, they want a special election, they want, they want something different than what you all want. And I believe you all should listen to the, to, to what you've heard today. I think you should, I believe you should take it in consideration. And, and don't look at it lightly. This is a very, very serious, uh, issue at hand, and what you've heard today, it, it speaks volumes. It should speak volumes to each and every one of you. Uh, we, a lot of people elected you all to be able to make the right decision. If, if you drop the ball, then you've made the wrong decision. So, it's, it's very, very critical that you make the right, right decision. You've heard the people speak, so it's, it's gonna be left in you all hands on, on how it, how it moves. And if it moves the wrong way, then you, then it, what good is that? What, you owe the people, the people that put you in office to make the right decisions, each and every one of you. And as a precinct chair, I have to, I have to speak to those people. I have to speak to those people. I'm in the communities. They asking me the questions, wanting me to come back and ask you, "What are you gonna do about it?"
Thank you. There was another person I believe I saw. Yes, sir.
My name's Melvin Mumble. I live in two thousand and one South Main Street here in Winston. Uh, which, forgive me, I'm a little unfamiliar with the process, uh, 'cause my particular main reason for coming up here is I do street mu, uh, music in my spare time as a busker, which by definition, that's someone who performs, whether it be music or an act of some sort for tips. And the main place to do that naturally is the downtown area. I've been doing it for about two and a half years, uh, with relative success, Winston's where I got started, where I got my encouragement to play. I do it as a side thing, but even if I did it as a main thing, my main concern is, as downtown continues to grow, we get more hotels, we get more residences, naturally, it doesn't matter what you're doing, you can have a thousand people like it, someone's not gonna like it. And as buskers, we're getting, we get a call and we get a complaint, and despite the rules showing that we are legally within our bounds by sound, location, things of that nature, we're being pushed out, we're being asked to leave, or certain, uh, catch twenty-twos within the rules are being used to get rid of us. Someone complains about something completely different, has nothing to do, technically, you're near this patio, technically, it's illegal for you to put. The only few places that someone can play their music or do their thing, wherever it may be, is in an empty field out by the warehouses. And I think we need to go back, and I don't know what the process is, to revisit the rules. I wanna make it fair for buskers and residents. My goal isn't to play out someone's building for eight hours and keep them up. But it's very frustrating when I've had the police call on me maybe thirty, forty times the last couple of years, and I'm dealing with them, talking with them, when I've done nothing wrong. I would love to talk to the people who are complaining, but I can't, 'cause they live in these high-rises, and there's no way I can get in there, communicate. I don't know who called. I asked who called. There's nothing I can do, but I'm losing not just lots of time, but it gives a bad look to buskers. This is something completely legal, and we're doing it completely legally, but we're spending all this time looking as if we're criminals, you know, which, and I would like to praise the downtown bike patrol. They've been very fair to me, they've been very kind, but they're being pushed by residents who, because they have more influence due to cash, they act as if they own downtown because they live in it. It is a shared space, it's the common space of the city. So, I would like to revisit those rules and, uh, work together to create a new resolution that's fair for buskers and residents, which will help the public. Also, one side thing I would like to say, uh, relating to the East Ward issue, it's my first time hearing about it, and I must also say, I am appalled as far as the, uh, actual, the citizens do not have a chance to vote on who, uh, there is appointed, and I don't think that's the right way to go at all. I ask the council, there's a way, there's got to be a way to amend it, to go back. It's just not a fairer way to go about business, I think.
If you would, uh, give Mr. Riley your contact information, I'm sure to be glad to follow up with you on the busker's rule.
Absolutely, thank you.
We've, we've expended our thirty minutes there, well, in the, the public comment session. Uh, councilmembers, in light of the things that you've heard, um, a motion to reconsider can be made by a person who voted in the affirmative for the, the first motion. So, if, if someone wants to make that motion to reconsider and they voted in the affirmative, we could, we could do that. All right, excuse me, we got people who wanted to make motions or comments?
Comments.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Councilmember Burke asked to speak first.
Yes, uh, when I listen to the attorney talk about the amendment, if I sit here and I've listened to the citizens, it's not that you can make me do anything, but what is right to me is for the citizens, with all that we've heard, to have some input. And so, what motion would I make, whether it fails or whatever, to amend this?
We need to have a motion to reconsider first, councilmember.
I move that we reconsider the motion that we made earlier.
Second.
Sure, second. Now, discussing, councilwoman Montgomery.
Right. Uh, then, so I wanna make a couple clarifying statements, um, that, uh, throughout this entire conversation. So, and I'm, I hate that Mr. Carter and Ms. Washington have left out, 'cause I received two phone calls throughout this entire process, two phone calls from individuals who objected to the process. And so, uh, and on the other side of that, I, I have other individuals who I've had a conversation with, have another meeting in the morning, that I'm sure has something to do with the election and this process as well. But on the other side of that, it, it had not been in that same side. So, as we have engaged on issues consistently throughout, uh, the, um, the tenure and time, it's interesting that the very same folks who came, Mr. Carter, who didn't, who didn't call me, who I called to, to get an opinion from after running into him, would, would make the assertion that individuals weren't reaching out. So, and everybody else, the majority of individuals who spoke has a contact information to share their issue or the challenge that they have, and that's the way other issues have been brought forward. And so, if that's the will, as I've said consistently, if you can read in, in newspaper articles to hear from what the community has stated, one of the things that I would ask the city attorney to be specific on is the timing of a special election and, and what happens in the process of a special election if it happens. And so, again, out of the thirty thousand people who live in East Ward, it's not ten thousand, thirty thousand people who live in the East Ward, that the process for a special election requires that the seat is vacated prior to the time that there's an ability for a special election to happen. So, the timing of that is an actual issue if we're talking about a November special election. So, I want folks to understand that there's a difference between that. But if that's the will of the folks in the community, I have no issue with that, but the timing of that for November for a special election is quite different than what has been put forth tonight, for folks to understand what that means if you're talking about a November special election, as well as if you read, read other publications, some of the individuals who spoke tonight also stated very clearly their position of submitting their name to be considered as a candidate. So, please understand who's influencing this conversation tonight and what you hear. Uh, Ms. Attorney, uh, if you would speak to the special election process?
Mayor, um, Mayor Protem Burke, um, council members, under the local act, it says, "Should a vacancy exist on the Board of Aldermen," because that was the term used back then, "of the city of Winston-Salem by death, resignation, or otherwise, then by expiration of term, and should the unexpired term at the time the vacancy occurs be for twelve months or more, then the Forsyth County Executive Committee of each political party shall immediately designate a candidate for said vacancy, and the Board of Aldermen shall cause to be held in the ward which the vacating Alderman represented, an election to fill said vacancy. The candidate receiving a majority of the votes cast shall assume office forthwith. The election shall be held no later than sixty days after the vacancy occurs. Insofar as possible, the election shall be conducted in accordance with the laws governing other municipal elections in the city of Winston-Salem."
And, and so, based upon that interpretation, the vacancy occurs under a special election, not based upon a date in the future, uh, on a special election, but based upon the date that that's effective?
Right.
So, let's say I submitted resignation effective September the third. There could not be a call for a special election until after September third.
Say it again.
If I submitted a, a resignation that is effective September third, there couldn't be a call for a special election if I submitted such or that tonight. There couldn't be a call for a special election until after the September third, when the vacant, when the vacancy actually happens for the special election.
I think that's probably the best way to read it. The other thing you could say is, once the, um, resignation has been tendered and has been accepted by council, the vacancy occurs at that point because you cannot revoke or rescind that, um, resignation at that point. But the problem is, again, you've got a compressed time period within which to hold or for that special election to occur. If that makes sense.
Right. And the part about the Democratic Party would actually nominate the individuals whose name would be on the ballot?
It says, "Then the Forsyth County Executive Committee of each political party shall immediately designate a candidate for said vacancy, and the Board of Aldermen shall cause to be held in the ward, uh, an election which the vacant, uh, vacating Alderman is leaving." So, basically, you would need one person from the Republican Party and one person from the Democratic Party.
And again, the greater public doesn't vote in that process.
It's just the ward.
Just the executive committee of the party.
Oh, yes.
Oh. Right.
Councilwoman Larson.
Yeah, I think it's very important that we note the two options that have been presented by the various ordinances and laws that are in place. One is what we voted on, more or less, and that is that the council will receive as many nominations as the citizens want to sent forward, uh, of potential candidates for review, and I understand the problems that have been discussed tonight. The, the other, the other option is that the executive committees of the Republican Party and the Democratic Party select a candidate. There, there, there's no primary in these discussions, not like a normal election would have. So, though, there would, there'd be one vote, basically, one, one election, there would be two candidates, one by the Democratic Executive Committee of their, of their party, and there'd be one candidate by the Republicans would be put forward. Uh, there is no, uh, five people running in the primary and they sort it out and then it goes forward. So, I think you understand that the, the level of participation is going to either be by the citizens coming forward with nominations and support and whatever for candidates out of the ward, or the, the fight will be at the executive committees of the, and the precinct, we got precinct chairman and whatever here, who will be responsible then for selecting a candidate to put forward on the ballot. That will be an election that will occur within sixty days, is that what it said? Sixty days after this gentleman tenders his resignation, which is yet to be done. So, it may happen in November, it may not, uh, kinda it all depends. And I'm, I, I think with, with the schedule that we're talking about, you know, this thing could actually go on a little while longer. Uh, but I think the important thing for the ward to decide is, do they wanna handle it within the party system, or do they wanna have a multiple candidate selection process handled at the, at the, um, at the council level? Is that basically is the two choices? And so, what we voted on tonight was send, send the nominations forward with all the credentials and everything, and we'll hash it out in public, uh, with, through a series of voting, or, uh, send it back to your, um, precincts and your, your executive committee, and they'll select one candidate to come forward, which will run against the Republican or the Democrat, depending on which one they are. That's what the, I understand the law allows.
Councilwoman Allen.
Um, I was told a long time ago that you have to admit when you made a mistake and when you need to listen to the voices. I made a mistake, and I'm, I'm woman enough to admit it. I made a mistake, and I'm, I'm woman enough to admit it. You're right. We need to let y'all fight this out. Because what you don't want, for those who were at the Democratic Party meeting the other week, you don't want five or six people running on one side of the ticket, and there's only one on the other side. It could be a bad thing. But my, my homework to everybody, like I take, go learn your numbers. Look at your, your ward, see where your numbers are, see what the demographics are. Because if you think that all of this, we have an election, and if we have four or five people on the ballot, and there's one person on the other side, this could turn out to not be such a good thing, even though it is a good thing. But mayor, as you saw, I seconded the amendment to the motion by the Mayor Pro Tem. I'm for that, yeah. I made a mistake. Let you all figure it out.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yeah. I think that part of what we're dealing with here is a misunderstanding of what the legal options are.
Right.
The council has appointed replacements to serve out the remainder of terms in the past. That is the precedent that is in place now. The alternative proposal of running a special election has merit for discussion, but under the circumstances of what the statute allows, we would not be talking about a normal, open, general election. We're not talking about a process where anyone can come forward paying a filing fee and put your name on the ballot and run in a primary. You're talking about another alternative, at least as closed process, in which you would submit your name to the, those members of the county executive committees which live in the East Ward. That's probably going to be a relatively small body of active folks coming in and making a decision, in effect, in a single meeting, without any public process, about who is going to be nominated. And then you've got two folks running in a special election, and your only choices are one of those two folks. There is no perfect, absolutely democratic solution available under the law for filling an unexpired term. It's not like you can have a ballot free-for-all, and the person with the most votes wins the remainder of the term. If that were an option, then we would be dealing with a very different kind of choice. Here, we're talking about the, what is the most open alternative available, given a limited number of options for, you know, filling the remainder of an unexpired term. And that's what we have, what we ought to keep in mind when we're looking at the pros and cons of the alternatives.
Councilmember Clark, and Councilmember.
I happen to be sitting in the seat where this last occurred, which was eighteen years ago. At that time, Bob Northern resigned, he was a Republican, and the Republican Executive Committee, similar to what was just read, nominated someone. By the way, it wasn't me, it was another gentleman. And he served out, and that name was put forward, and he was approved by the council, and he served the term out, and luckily or unluckily, I beat him in the general election in November. But the point being here, if we can't have a, a typical free election, I'd rather the citizens, the, that serve as precinct chairs and other positions in the Democratic Party to select their nominee than the folks sitting up here. And, and by the way, I, I wasn't born yesterday. I realize that most likely, the Democrats are going to win that election, since they've won every election in the East Ward, since the East Ward's been here. But still, I'd rather have those folks pick it than up here where there's only one person in the East Ward sitting.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Not necessarily so will Democrats win. First, the precinct chairs of the East Ward need to see how many of your precincts are organized. Now, I'm going to give you an example. The councilwoman talked about get your numbers together. Long years ago, I was not involved as far as being an elective official or precinct chair. But there's a place on Patterson Avenue. It is now the main, it is the post office. It used to be a school. In that area, that North Ward had so many percentage of whites and blacks. A lady by Ms. Scott, who was the sister to Dr. Bruce, she ran and won on the Democratic ticket. And here comes a white Republican man who could hardly read, he got the seat. So don't think to be too sure. If you're not organized, you need to be organized.
We have before us, councilmembers, a motion to reconsider. We'd need to vote on that first. Those in favor of reconsidering the earlier item, which is to select a process by filling the vacancy, so this motion is to reconsider that. Is that going to be able to come up? Can we do just a voice vote on that? Okay, we'll do, we'll do a voice vote on that. Those in favor of reconsidering the item G six, please indicate by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, it's seven to one to reconsider. So we will now, would entertain a motion to establish a different selection process, which could be, I assume you want to make a motion to approve holding a special election to fill the vacancy. Councilmember Bessie?
Yes. I would suggest that if we're going to consider a special election, making a decision this evening is premature, because Councilwoman Montgomery has not yet submitted a resignation. One thing that I think appears to be off the table is a special election for the East Ward in November, because we are simply too close to the November sixth election for there to be a reasonable process with people named to that ballot. We are less than sixty days away from the start of early voting, let alone the printing of ballots and the availability for absentee ballots. And we cannot kick off a process until there's a vacancy.
Yeah, the vacancy can be established in the future. It doesn't have to be considered a certain date. I think you make a good point, Councilwoman Bessie. I would suggest to council, without objection, since we do, we have approved to reconsider this, how about we table this for tonight and bring it back at the next meeting after some chance for deliberation and thought about how the process could work on a, on a basis for that. And perhaps Councilwoman Montgomery will be a little more gelled in his timeframe as well. So without objection, we will, Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, just making sure, like we said, if we're tabling it as to the folks in the East Ward and the executive committee of the county, I think we need to make sure it's out there on the website, the options of what's out there, and explain it at a level that everybody gets it. Put it in the Chronicle, put it in the Journal. Trust me, it'll be worth the effort. And if we need to post it at Recreation Centers, Economic Community Development Assistant Manager, we need to do this. So at least by the time we get back together, people will understand how this goes. Again, mayor, I think people need to understand in East Ward, you might need a caucus, as we call it. Find out what the numbers you need to have, how many precinct chairs, who's voting. You need to understand that part of the process, if you don't understand anything else, okay?
All right. Just, Councilmember Montgomery?
I just want, just one last comment, just to, I echo what Councilmember Adams said. Folks, be clear on what your options are. Your option is to let the party executive committee who lives in the East Ward vote, which would not allow for even the type of engagement that we've had tonight, for public dialogue and public comment for people, period, in the same process, or the council in an open process to have the same type of dialogue. Those are the real two, two, two abilities, because at the end of the day, as Councilwoman Clark said, based upon the person who, and I, I'll attempt to, I'll make a bet on, on the race, that whoever the party elects in that seat is likely to, to move forward in, in that, that election, but still, there's no guarantee in that process. And as well, three, three, six, two, four, five, one, zero, eight, eight. Three, three, six, two, four, five, one, zero, eight, eight. It is a number, my number, you can contact. Please share your opinion, your thoughts. It has been open, and, and individuals have called, and we've set meetings up throughout this entire process. So if you want to share, please do so and share, because if I hear an abundance from the East Ward that goes from downtown at Trade Street to Union Cross in Kernersville, from the people who live in the ward, on what they want in that, that'll be what my advocacy is in, in that sense. And that has not been the case up until tonight in this meeting.
All right.
Yes, I was going to say, City Manager, you heard what Councilwoman said about the places we would have let it be known. Is there any way we have anything here that they could call into a number?
Mayor Pro Tem, we can, we have, we have the citizen information number, we can put a recorded message. We can also, we'll also tell all of our 301 City Link agents, we'll give them a script. So if they call 311, we'll have the information there for, for individuals.
And this evening, Mayor, members of the council, and all of us, you've seen government work for the people.
So councilmembers, to summarize, we will be tabling it tonight. We will get the word out about how this particular process would work, and then we'll come back at, at a subsequent meeting and define, make the final decision if we want to hold a special election and how that would work. All right, very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? We adjourn.[1767.86]